This time we'll call the meeting to order. If we could have roll call.
Mr. Holden?
Present.
Mr. Menotti?
Present.
Mrs. Yolesh?
Present.
Dr. Ritter?
Here.
Mrs. Gatos?
She's expected momentarily.
Mrs. Kutesh?
Here.
Mr. Joello?
Here.
Mrs. Kilmarten?
Here.
And Mr. Gunkhals?
Excuse me.
You are.
All right.
I should go into a song. "All Along."
All right, at this time if we could please rise and salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. And Ann Gatos has joined us. Just so that people do understand, while our regular monthly meetings do have an opportunity for public input, this is a special meeting and does not. Board members will be happy to hear what you have to say at the conclusion of the meeting in the hallway or via email or social media and so forth. At this time I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Budget adjustments to balance the 2018-19 school year. And I thought what we would do is we would start off with our superintendent's recommendations and then we could take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to start by saying a lot of things happen every day in history, but this is a day that has particular resonance with me. RFK, Robert F. Kennedy, was killed on this day 15 years ago. He said a lot of very beautiful and meaningful things, but the future is not a gift, it is an achievement. Every generation helps make its own future. This is the essential challenge of the present. I think that has bearing on today's get-together, so I thought it was worth shining some light on that. With that said, we have been, we meaning the administration, particularly the cabinet made up of me, of course, and Lorraine Rosner, and Carol Pinozzo, and Ed Drapp. We have worked very hard on this with many other members of our team, including curriculum and principals and others, and we have done our best to find a way to maintain the integrity of our services while experiencing really unprecedented cuts. I know unprecedented is not quite the right word, because I know when the financial collapse of 2008, there was perhaps even greater cuts. But these are cuts that, in my view, are unnecessary. The city of Shelton, in my view, as a student of politics, has the money to pay for the things that we need and that we ask for in our $2.8 billion request. That was not forthcoming, as everyone in this room knows, and so we are making adjustments. So the project today is to reconcile the money that has been appropriated versus the money that we requested. So that is an over $2 million gap, and we are going to be discussing tonight some of what our recommendations are in terms of reconciling those two numbers. Now, with that said, this is very serious work, and I'm saying this not for you members of the board who are well aware of this, but for everyone in the room to know, a lot of thought went into these things. These are not off-the-cuff recommendations, these are recommendations that take into consideration first and foremost the well-being of students and their future. We are building, we are working on an education system here, and our strategic planning is to take into consideration how we deliver, not just for their needs today, that's important, but how we are preparing them for their future. And going on a budget that is slashed like this is going to make that difficult. Now, we are going to work hard to make it work, we're going to do the best we can, but we are, and the cuts that we are proposing here are based on the notion of balance. And by balance, I mean how we meet the needs of students day-to-day, and sometimes the classic paradigm for that is teacher standing in classroom, kids sitting at desks. That is a part of it, and having reasonable class sizes is a part of it. But there are other parts of it, there are other things that we need to do in order to prepare our students and to support them. So for instance, mastering of mathematics, that doesn't necessarily happen in a classroom for every student. Some students get it, some students don't, they need extra support. Library-media specialists, they are helping us, our students, learn how to code. They're helping our students learn how to things as simple as keyboard. Someone has to teach you how to keyboard if you're not lucky enough to unlearn it at home. And so, and how to distinguish between fake news and real news, and how to find information, there's a lot to it. But there's a lot to what we do, and I would ask the people that are thinking about these decisions tonight to take a deep breath before sharpening up their pencils and/or other instruments that can be sharp, and think about the work that people are really doing. Because sometimes it's easy to say, oh, here's a list of people, just cut the top five off and then we'll just keep going. We won't just keep going. We'll manage somehow, but we'll be doing less, and we won't be doing it as effectively. And that needs to be taken into consideration. So when we talk about removing positions, this is very difficult. And so we've taken into consideration the day-to-day and the future needs of our students, and we are looking forward to a very spirited discussion tonight about this. I know that many of you have seen these numbers and have been thinking about it, and some of you have sent in some suggestions, and no doubt other suggestions that we made tonight, as is appropriate. I will tell you just two more things, and then ask Ed and then Carol to add to the conversation as we continue, but I will say the following. I did send a formal memo to the mayor and to each member of the Board of Alderman requesting six SROs to be placed in our elementary schools, and I include Perry Hill in that. That has been sent, hand-delivered by me, so I am certain it was sent and received. So that is something that I want parents to be aware of, that that is part of where we are. Now, I have not received a formal response yet, but they have received a formal request. In addition, on a different subject but related to budget, we are, as you know, are waiting still to find out whether or not the yellow school buses, the propane school buses that the taxpayers of Shelton bought, and will be completely paid for by the end of this month. So July 1, the city of Shelton owns them, and there's no payment, which is a great profit. It's north of $1 million a year of extra funds that will be available to the city. With that said, it is still unclear as of this moment whether or not those buses will or will not be available to us to provide transportation for Shelton students to go to and from school. They are clean propane buses, again, that you paid for. I will tell you though, I wouldn't, I don't want to paint a silver lining around a dark cloud, but I will say there's a little ray of light, and that is that the mayor and Durham are contracted provider for student transportation, are talking to each other today. And so there may be news coming later today or tomorrow. There's no guarantee, needless to say, and the details of that are unknown at this point. But there is still dialogue going on about that. So I am hopeful, but I don't want to be naive either. Yes?
The, if, if there is, if we get the buses, then there would be a savings of, and you said about 800,000?
Eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred thousand, roughly?
A little over 800,000, yeah.
And that 800,000 is included in these budget cuts?
Yes.
Okay.
So to your point, that's a great point. If we are to, if we receive some good news, maybe even during this meeting, and if that happens, I will report it. But in any event, if we are in the next day or so to receive some good news on that front, then what I would recommend to the board is that we reconvene and revisit a new list of potential cuts that would be much smaller and would be much less painful to the district. So I'm hopeful that that happens. But all we can do is to present to you some very serious, well-thought-out ideas about reconciling the allocation that we know we have versus the funding that we have available.
One other question. Is, in the contract, I saw, Ed sent us the copy of the contract, but we didn't see, I didn't see a signed contract. Is there a clause for, in other words, so that we can get out of that situ, I know we signed on for three years, correct? Is there a way to reconcile it to be for one year, as in the city's proposal? I know it would probably cost more money, right?
Well, again, right now you have a three-year contract. There is a paragraph in there with certain caveats that talk about, you know, either side can give 90 days' notice.
Okay.
But we have checked with our council on that, and it has to be for reason. We can't just say, you know, it's Tuesday and we decided that, and also 90 days is problematic, because if you start counting 90 days from today, you can see where that brings us.
I wasn't talking about for, I wasn't talking about for this school year, because I know that we need buses as of July 1. We need them. I'm talking about if, because the city's proposal was for, their second proposal, I believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they, their proposal was that we would work together with them over the course of a year to put in a city bus plan. Is that, am I right or am I wrong?
No, you're essentially right, but it, the working on it for a year and determining whether it was a valuable, reliable program was not how it was phrased. It was like, we would agree to use the buses this year, and then next year they would run the program. It's not clear to me, as your superintendent, whether or not the skill set or capacity to do that exists on the city side. They do a lot of things very well, they've never run a bus company. I'm not sure that they're prepared to do that. If they are, I'd like to see facts and written proposals that would indicate that they're ready.
Okay, and that goes to my third question, which, I don't know, maybe I misheard this, but I had heard that there are very few cities that do their own busing. But when I checked with the Department of Transportation, they said there are 17.
So I think that this is an interesting, and as a former teacher, you appreciate vocabulary. There are school districts in Connecticut that run their own transportation, not municipalities, like, because, and this has been switched and changed oftentimes in discussion. So for instance, I was told right out of City Hall that Glastonbury was an example of a municipality that runs their own busing. It's the school district that runs it.
School district that runs.
And that's very different. And so, yeah, it is not the case that there are lots of municipalities that do it.
But there are some.
I don't know of any.
Okay.
But there may be, but I have looked into it and have not been able to discover any. With that said, the reason most school districts, the great majority of school districts in the state of Connecticut do not run their own transportation is because it is very complex. The state rules, the maintenance requirements, the staffing requirements, the checkups on staff, the trying to be, the attempt to ensure and regulate the quality and safety of a bus transportation system for the good of the kids, those are all very complex things. Most school districts have decided it is in their best interest to focus on education and not on buses. And most cities have never even gotten into it because it's beyond their skill set.
Did we, did we in Shelton, does anyone know, Arlene's not here, but, does anybody know if we ever did our own busing at one point?
I guess as I did, I wouldn't know how long, but, you know, it was common, but now, you know, the trend is towards private.
Maybe in the 60s or so. The other thing is, when you're looking at having the city run the school buses, one of the factors to consider is that municipalities and boards of education for that matter tend to have much nicer medical plans than the private sector. And so the cost of medical could be much higher for the city than for Durham, so that's something that could get in the way of cost savings. But in any event.
Well, hopefully they would, they would be smart enough to realize if they could handle it or they couldn't handle it. I would, I would hope.
Well, I mean, clearly they still needed some time to figure it out this time.
Definitely.
And I don't think, I think that the problem turned out to be much more complex than they expected. And I know that the point person who was involved in it was somebody who has some experience with motor vehicles, but, you know, there were things that he never had to consider when he was working on that side.
Thank you.
So what you have here is a list of potential reductions that would, that would add up to the amount that we need, which is approximately, I'm going to just round to 2.2 million. Many of these speak for themselves, but I think that they merit going through them one by one. Ed, why don't I have you begin the conversation, and then we will pause after each one to answer questions and provide clarifications.
The total is 2.4 million that we're looking at, so about 1.6 million if you remember the first iteration, and then when we signed the bus contract, another 800,000 or so. So the target was a little over $2.4 million. So as the heading states, these are options for your consideration, obviously, we looked at, obviously, things that would have the least impact where possible on academics. We certainly wanted to take advantage of new information that we had since this budget was developed and adopted in January, I believe. So that's where we start, looking at some staff reductions, elimination of four positions due to retirements or resignations, and you have a separate sheet that shows the details there. Next is reassigning some staff at the intermediate school, savings of $145,000. And again, you can see Mr. Serenich's plan for reassigning staff to realize some savings there.
Ed, can I quickly jump in on this point? So I just want to, as part of this discussion, want to assure you that nowhere in our proposed list of reductions, excuse me, nowhere is there a plan to end the School of Innovation. Our plan is to continue with that, and that means that next year our plan is to have seventh grade and eighth grade be part of the School of Innovation, with the plan the following year, we go into ninth grade, it will be part of the high school as well. So the plan is to have it seven and eight next year, and then grow in from there for the good of the kids, so that they can follow that along. With that said, I just want to make sure that everyone in the room understands, we are not proposing cutting the School of Innovation or eliminating it or anything like that.
Is, is, is the School of Excellence still going to be?
Yes.
So it's, so they're going to have?
Same model.
The same model?
Yes.
It's just the restructuring of the eighth-grade teachers?
Yes, in other words, the work that was done this year in the initial pilot year would expand into eighth grade, so it will be seventh and eighth grade, but the same model. There'd be options for parents to have a more traditional method of instruction provided or to have the more innovative style. This year in the School of Innovation, just now, we are working on student-led, student-parent conferences. So these are parent conferences where the parents typically come in, and the teacher will, would explain how the child has done, and the teacher is obviously present and is an important part of the conversation, but the switch is, students are leading those conversations, and they have been, so far, this is our first go-round, they have been very successful, and what we had hoped for is happening. Students are thinking very deeply about their own learning. And that's something that doesn't cost a lot of money, it's not a new program that we had to go buy, but it required some training, and the teachers were very open to it, but the most important part is we're preparing kids to be future adults where they can think about how they learn, what they're going to need. When something like this, because you know what's going to happen, the kids that are right now in first and second grade, for those of you who are third grade, that have the kids, this is going to be like old-fashioned. They're going to say, oh, I remember when you had these things and all that. There's going to be something completely new. We need to prepare them to be able to think about how they're going to learn to handle those new things, and not just technology, also how they're going to handle career choices.
The Chromebooks for the, for the next grade, they're going to come out of what we're saving this year?
Correct. Yes, the Chromebooks for the middle school program, yes, intermediate school.
I have a question for Ed. When you have staff reductions, you have it for 319,000 roughly, does that include the benefits?
Yes, and we'll see some adjustments.
And the sick day payouts?
No, they don't, they, their sick day payouts would be the following year, correct? Okay. Can I, can I tag on to that? Is there a vacancy savings line somewhere on here, or no?
Vacancy.
In other words, I'm figuring, I know.
I'm fill positions, I'm just.
Right. No, the four full-time positions that due to retirement or resignation.
Yeah.
Well, I happen to know who the four teachers are.
Yeah.
All right, I also happen to know that they are on the top step, so I figured that they're making somewhere between 95 and 100,000 dollars each. So to me, in my mind, it's somewhere about 400,000, and then I figured if you're paying the minimum of insurance on 10,000 single, I don't know if it's 16 or what it is for a married, but even if you do the minimum of 10,000, that would be 40,000, so I have somewhere around 440.
I said, there's lines down below, workers' comp, unemployment, and health insurance, you'll see the savings there.
No, but it says, that says based on new rates developed by actuary.
Yeah, it also considers the positions as well.
Well, I think it would be better to have a vacancy savings line somewhere in here to show that.
Sure.
Because it does show, I mean, in my mind, I'm seeing 319,050, and in my mind, I figured it to be about 440,000.
I will provide the details.
Thank you.
Of the people within those categories.
Okay.
But I took it right from the list of reductions of salaries, so that should.
Well, you can get back to me on that.
Yeah, but it's in, it's in here, though. And notice that it says retirements or resignations, and some of the people that are retiring will be replaced.
But when they're replaced, you're still not, the chances are you're not going to replace them with new teachers, chances are you're going to be replacing them with staff.
No, then you don't save their full salary. But then you don't save their full salary.
Well, Mark, if you have, if you have a teacher right now that's making 50,000 dollars and they were going to get laid off, or they, because they wouldn't have a job, but now they're taking this teacher's job, they're still getting their 50,000 salary.
Right.
And that, and that teacher that retired still is giving up her 100,000 salary.
All of that, all of that is in these calculations, which you might find if we go through this a little more, you'll see it.
Okay, all right.
We can circle back. There's no reason why we can't go back to number one later on.
Okay, thank you.
I can provide you the exact list of people, their salaries, and the replacement salaries that we anticipated with, but those calculations, I can assure you are.
Okay, thank you.
Ed, I have a question relative to the staff reduction. You have one special ed teacher, but according to our meeting on May 23, I count up four of the special ed teachers that are either resigning or retired. So is this in addition to the four we're already losing?
No, we're replacing some of them.
Yeah, we're replacing some of those as well as some of those are paid out of grants, so they don't impact your budget.
And is the reassigning of staff meant to help fill those vacancies left behind by those retirements and resignations, or it's something separate?
I think a combination.
It's a little of both.
It's a little of both, okay.
Yeah. He can better utilize his staff, address the Spanish challenge that he had this year. So I think he was thoughtful in how he can maximize the vacancies that he had. Then we had the, we had a couple proposed position enhancements, so eliminating 4.8 of those positions and making a bit of detail. Item 1, extension to the church area, go, in regards at Shelton Intermediate, assigned position that you can leave in high school, and item 2, public school tuition. We are running below projections this year. As well as the schools start sending me their projected enrollments, kids that they have are going next year, those numbers are down, so I think we can safely reduce the tuition line by 50,000 dollars. Operating savings, again, 17,000, a collection of savings that we're seeing this year on telephone ringing advertising, trailer rental expenses, so 2,000 here, 3,000 in there on those line items. Workers' comp, we've talked about our reduced utilization in that area. Unemployment, $20,000. And we did leave a cushion with some layoffs happening within the budget, so we did leave a cushion in the unemployment line item. So that's in addition to the additional amount we expect or potentially we can pay out this year. $175,000, we did meet with the actuaries to get their recommended rates. We did build in some increase when we built the budget, as well as anticipate some new folks coming on board, but that does again take into account the reduction in positions as well. Athletic equipment, we talked about buying the football uniforms and the goals to the field out of this year's budget as well. Computer equipment, we have staff desktops, which the city, I believe, has agreed to purchase, and Dr. Colette, I know, has delivered the quote to them for 258,000 dollars. We had 90,000 in our budget for that, because our plan was to lease them. We will also be purchasing some Chromebooks for the intermediate school in Perry Hill out of this year's, on these as well.
Ed, I have a question. If our budget, if we in our budget said that we were going to lease them, spend 90,000, then how can you use three, almost 300,000 as the savings? Shouldn't it be 90,000?
No.
Or plus, plus, I understand it, but plus the Chromebooks that we're going to buy this year?
And the one-to-one.
The number was higher, so we're planning on more computers at the Perry Hill, we do the one-to-one, providing a fraction of what we would have purchased, but this is the amount that you had in your budget for that equipment.
There were multiple line items for computer equipment in our budget.
Right.
They've lumped them together in this.
How much money are we expected to save at the end of this year that we're going to carry, that we're going to spend on stuff for next year? What's that total number?
Probably 300,000 to 400,000 dollars.
Well, it's, it's less every day.
Okay, explain that statement, Chris.
Well, in other words, what we don't do is leave it in a, in a, in a bank account until the very end of the year and say, here it is. And what we do is, when we anticipate based on reasonable projections, we then start to say, well, what are some of the needs, i.e. the Chromebooks for the middle school, for instance, and I know this is a sore subject, by the way, but, and so we start to purchase them now. So in other words, that amount of money won't be, at the end of the year, we won't have that amount of money left over.
No, no, but I mean, we've got the contract for, that we agreed on last month for redistricting.
Yes.
And the Chromebooks.
Yes.
And.
Soccer goals and uniforms.
Soccer goals and stuff, and I just want to, so we're talking about 300,000 to 400,000 is what we were.
Yes.
What we're projecting as a, as a.
Yes.
Unexpended funds.
Yes, that, unexpended funds that will then become.
Be expended.
We also have some grant money that we're using up, so when I say buying out of this year, some will be the operating and some will be closing out some grants.
Which, which is an important point that it makes. It's not 400,000, it's true, it's unexpended, but it's not out of this year's budget. It includes money that came out of some grants that have to be expended, otherwise we'll lose it. So we're, I think we're, I think we're making good decisions to use the money for the purposes of education.
Yeah, we're looking, again, any excess school money will be going towards health and safety issues, so I've been working with the principals on some of those that were identified, and working with Mr. Calhoun. So again, you know, these are things that need to be done, again, for a variety of reasons.
And anything that we're using, the excess grant money falls within the parameters of the grant itself, correct?
And we still plan to do the one-to-one from, for computers at Perry Hill?
No.
No.
We're not going to do that.
We are not able, we want to do it. We're not able to do it because of the slashing.
It's unfortunate to see more starting from grade one on up next year.
A lot of, a lot of schools. Yeah. When I, when I hear we're not ready, I will only tell you this, the kids are ready.
Right.
Forty-five percent of school districts have one-to-one across the board.
Statewide or nationwide?
Nationwide.
Mark, maybe we need to make another bus trip.
That's not in the budget.
We don't have the budget.
We don't have the buses, that's, well, no, if we do it before July 1st.
Items 11 and 12 are transportation to a magnet, health, and gifted program to acquire to provide. to provide that transportation. The magnet school, you do have some students who either through child services or corrections attend those schools that you are providing, provided some. So we kept some money in there, but reduced that by about half. And then transportation to the talented and gifted program that you have students attending in Trumbull and in Hemente may not require to provide.
This is a big change.
That's access and ACES, those?
Pardon?
The talented and gifted are access and ACES?
Yes. But again, you can see the number of students that we transport and.
It's a lot of money.
Their amount of money for that service, which is certainly valuable, but in our time, we've got to make tough choices.
And what grade levels are those students?
I have it, I don't know it offhand, but I.
Is it elementary up?
Yes.
Is it elementary?
I believe we have some, yeah.
They're shaking their heads back there.
I can check, I've got the list.
No, no, no. It's high school? High school.
I'll double check that, but.
The six to six is not high school.
That's, yes.
Well, it says magnet school.
So magnet.
Yeah, this, this is, this is.
I was thinking that the gifted, the gifted I was asking.
But this is, this is a difficult situation because many districts that have the kind of relative wealth that Shelton has, provide these services for parents and parents expect these services and we're no longer able to provide them, depending on what your final evaluation is.
Item 13, preschool. Currently, we run, we have four preschool teachers. We run eight sections, so we have an AM section and a PM section that runs two hours and 45 minutes for each section. We have, anyway, obviously, like anything, the numbers are fluid, but 72 students to maybe 90 throughout the year. So the proposal is to reduce that by one teacher and one preschool, eight. That would still allow us six sections, so we would have anywhere from 12 to 15 students in each section.
So would that be lessening the number of available positions to students or increasing class size?
Increasing class size.
Right. So we're going from about 12, what, divide 72 by eight, so in some cases now, when we're at our low point, we're at the low 10 stu, per students per section, this will put it at about 12 to 15.
Don't forget, Kate, when they first come in.
Right.
That the numbers are very small.
And as they turn through it.
And then as they, yeah, so.
That's right. Ed, did you want to talk here about the tuition issue or you're going to wait until later?
Um, yeah.
I think you should talk about it now.
Sort of lump it together.
That's line 18, why don't we work down to it?
Line 18, yeah, 60,000. Yeah, currently, we do not charge, we have, so you're required to provide preschool for special education students, students that qualify for certain services, 3 and 40-year-olds.
This is federal.
What you like to do is have a mix of general ed as students to role models.
Regular, regular ed peers.
As well.
Is that mix required by law?
Pardon?
Or is the mix required by law?
No, it's required, it's recommended as a practice, certainly.
Yeah.
But we do not charge tuition. A lot of districts do charge tuition for that. So again, the initial estimate was perhaps charging about 6,000 for regular ed student, not knowing how many students were qualified for free and reduced and therefore get a break from the tuition. We were conservative with that number. But about 25% of our students are general education, increased school. And I think Dr. Henaway figured out that it would still be about 11 dollars and 70 cents per hour for the students, which is much cheaper than a private textbook every week.
Would they have to pay if there was no school? No, I wanted to, I just want to ask a question. I, I thought that, that the state law required that we provide services such as OTPT, speech for those children, not necessarily a program, a school program.
I, I was asking somebody in my building, because we have PK in my building and she said it all depends on what their IEP costs for.
Depends on how the IEP is ran.
It could be more expensive to try to.
Oh, I agree. I like, I love the program. I, I go read there. I, I, I see the value of it, I'm just asking, is it.
Yeah, we're required to provide the service. Again, Dr. Henaway did look at it and with the transportation, that would be involved transporting a few students that might need that service.
Oh, and then they would have to go to different schools.
We do, and we do that now, providing the itinerary services to private pre-K programs. We, we send our people out there, but, but it's, in many cases, depending on the IEPs, it's more efficient and better for the kids, not just more efficient, to have a program where there's a school setting with regular ed peers.
Do we, do we provide service, those services to the preschool students that might require them at, like Holy Trinity?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Am I the only one who's hot?
I'm hot. I can open a window.
We're ready.
We'll start with one if you're still hot, we'll open two.
So there are state.
The adults.
Yeah.
So now we're talking about one to, like, one to.
Well, we still have parents, we have five parents.
Okay, so it's, okay.
Yeah, so there are parents, Mandy was talking about, you know, 12 to 15 students per teacher, there is a parent in with the teacher as well.
Usually, there's a parent and sometimes even a tutor as well, right?
So there's at least two in a classroom with the 12 to 15 kids.
There might be an OTPT person in there, so, you know, we have tutors.
Speech.
So there's, there's more adults involved in the program than just the 14.
Thank you.
Item 14, administration, reassigning the assistant principal position back to the classroom teaching position.
I really hate this one. I understand that it may be necessary, but the question is, could we furlough the person back to a classroom thereby maintaining the position and maintaining the person in the position, just having them reassigned temporarily?
I'm not sure I understand what that means.
I was discussing it with somebody and they indicated that if we did a furlough, that would allow the person to, in effect, maintain the position while being assigned to a classroom and.
Do both.
That would essentially.
It can't be in two, it can't be in two places at once.
Right.
So they have to be covered under one collective bargaining agreement. So the contracts, so, so if they're, they're in an administrative position, they'd be covered under the SAC agreement, a teacher would be covered under the SEA agreement. So I'm certain that we could do some kind of a memorandum of understanding, but for whatever position they're in, for 18, 19, they'd have to be covered under that collective bargaining agreement.
Yeah, and both unions would have to agree to something like that. And I, and I could imagine that being potentially very problematic, to be honest.
Okay.
But, but I, but the idea of, of keeping that individual in that position is very appealing.
Yes, well, that's my point.
Yeah.
I'm against eliminating as well.
We fought long and hard to get that position.
Well, nobody wants to eliminate anything, really.
Well, true. But that was a long fought battle and we have somebody in there who is doing an exceptional job and it really hurts.
Chris, is there any plan to do any redistricting this coming year? Moving any kids around? No.
Because to, to, in order, in order to do it well, because it's so emotional, it really needs to be done in a, in a systematic way where there's opportunities for the public to hear about the.
So Long Hill and ES and Elizabeth Shelton will continue to be the two largest schools.
Yes.
And will continue to share one assistant principal.
Well, they, or not.
Or not.
Or not.
Well, we have two, don't we?
No, we do have two, but one is, is the assistant principal at Perry Hill. She's, so we have a principal and an assistant principal. But that's been a mainstay, she's.
She's been there for years.
She's been there for years. Since it opened, right.
We fought for years to get the assistant principal.
I, I know the history.
No, I'm not.
I understand that, I understand that. The bottom line is, we want to make sure we keep teachers in the classroom.
Yep.
Absolutely.
Item 15 is a reduction to program improvement and staff development, so you can see the impact there, also a different way of writing curriculum and reducing to administrative interns.
And where would they come from?
Yeah. Booth Hill and Sunnyside.
But we have four, correct?
We have four.
So this is back to the notion of a balanced approach. We, we, instead of going in and cutting all people in certain positions, we're looking at reducing some so we can try and reconcile the budget.
And Booth Hill and Sunnyside are our smallest populations, that's why those were chosen.
Can we go back to 15 for just a moment?
Yeah.
I would expect that the elimination of outside, you know, and, and out of district conferences would include the Board of Education.
Yes. Well, the Board hasn't, we haven't gone on any.
Really, the only thing that we have done as a board is dictate convention.
That's it.
Well, I, I, you know, if we're asking, asking to tell the staff that they, that we're not going to pay for them to go.
Cut everything.
And they want to go, then the board should do the same thing.
Absolutely.
I don't really have a problem with that.
It's not a lot, but we should be included.
No, I.
I agree.
Item 17, reduce custodial overtime.
Waiting, I may have to go back. You said you were going to stop after each one, then hurry up. Under administrative interns, we have reducing the interns, but I don't see the substitutes that we would save by eliminating them.
Yes, the cost of the substitutes.
They would still be used within the building anyway.
Well, no, not for administrative interns.
The administrative interns, their, their substitutes, I believe, get paid per diem and it's a higher, much higher rate because you want experienced teachers. They're not, they're not getting paid the, our 60.
I thought it was the building subs that were covered.
We don't have, we don't have that anymore.
No.
Remember, we, we, we don't take interns anymore from.
No, we're talking building subs are covering when the administrative interns.
But the building subs aren't, no, no, they have sub, they have private, well, I know, I know particular two that have their, their own regular.
Parents, yeah.
Yeah, could you provide?
The ones that, the one, the interns at Perry Hill School do have, one of our interns is a special education teacher at Perry Hill School. And so since the interns are out of the classes up to 40 days, we have to provide a special ed certified sub hooked up to that intern because 40 days on a student's IEP could get us in trouble, would not be providing the mandated services to the student. So we have a teacher that is certified, one of our retirees, who is certified in special education, and so we're paying her a higher rate. Likewise, the intern that is in elementary ed, they're, back, when we initiated the program, 40, the interns are out of the classroom up to 40 days. That's a lot of days for a student not to have the services from a certified teacher.
Right.
So these positions are covered by certified teachers when the intern is off doing administrative tasks. And that's a higher rate of pay.
Oh, so it's not the building subs?
It is not the building sub in all cases, no.
That's a compression.
In some cases, on some particular days out of the 40, it may be the building sub, but it's not in all cases.
Okay.
So we need to adjust that.
Do you have a handle on what the overall percentage might be? Because quite frankly, you know, if we have the building subs doing 10 days in each of two schools, well, that's actually, unfortunately, a significant dollar amount for our budget.
I don't have it, but I could certainly get it out of ASOP and I could provide you that information, yes.
I think the majority probably, especially at Perry Hill, because you have such a big school.
Well, but we're not talking about eliminating it at Perry Hill.
No, 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 but I'm just talking about, I, I'm sure that, I don't know about.
We should be, we should really be looking at Sunnyside and Booth Hill because those are the ones that are going to lose it.
They do, they do, I know that they do help with walkthroughs and evaluations and bus problems and things like that.
I, I just don't want to be in a situation where we're overestimating our savings.
I'll get you that information.
It won't be a lot, but it's, it's a number worth having.
Well, it could save a teacher's job.
Well, I don't think it'll be that much.
It might, how about a tutor's job?
I wouldn't bet on that either, but, but on the other hand, if it's 500 bucks, we want it.
Times 40 days for each, times four.
We're not paying our subs 500 dollars a day.
I wish.
Anyway, the number will be provided.
Okay, so we.
Let's get that.
So Ed, did you write that down?
Adjust item 16.
Okay, to include substitute K. Thank you.
Are we on 17 now?
Yep.
Because I, I think it's important that we talk a little bit about building usage.
Yeah, so reducing custodial overtime, that, that will certainly look where we can be more efficient and do some things differently. It will also impact the building usage and what we would get come through the finance committee with is looking at how much we charge outside organizations and what organization we charge, the fees for building usage.
So what's the proposed fee then? Does it go from what to what?
I don't even.
Oh, we're not, we haven't gotten there yet? So the 50,000 is based on?
That's not the fee, that's the cost of the overtime for the custodians.
That's just the overtime, so, okay.
So we haven't done a comparison about what we take in as to what we expend? In overtime costs?
We have. That, that's not really what this is right here, but.
Well, this is to reduce the, well, but, but you talked about build, building usage and you linked it back to that, but we have a second shift for most of the schools.
We do.
Okay. So why is there an overtime fee related to building usage?
Because sometimes, some of the.
I couldn't understand Saturday or Sunday.
Well, Saturday and Sunday's big.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And sometimes events are big and it requires an extra person.
Four, two.
Yeah, or two, yeah. One of the things that's going to have to change, if we're going to live with this new, this new environment of truly underfunded local education, is that the notion of being community schools, which you've all taken pride in, and I have taken pride in, the schools are open to the community and, and that's, and that's as it should be, that's going to change. That's a paradigm that's going to change. We, we're going to, and it's going to be uncomfortable because there are a lot of groups in town that are used to having free access to the building and it's not free. We're subsidizing it, taxpayer money is subsidizing it. So when we say someone is using a block of classrooms every other afternoon for a, a period during the year, and, and because we have someone in the building, for instance, if there's no cost, there is a cost because there, there is work generated and it takes away from other things. So we're going to have to, to look at saying, we can't just have an open door policy anymore.
We've had this conversation in the past.
Sure.
Particularly with regards religious ed, because religious ed is in the classrooms and yes, the custodians are in the building at that time, but because religious ed is in the classrooms, the custodians can't clean the classrooms, so it takes them longer on the other end.
Do they still do scouting in the classrooms too?
Yeah.
Yes.
So I, I remember back as far as when Carla was on the board, that was a big conversation.
Yeah. And at one time, when we had a horrendous budget, we were essentially closing the buildings before dinner.
Right.
And, you know, evening events just could not happen. And, you know, it sounds to me like our plan is going to allow for that to happen, but you might need to pay. The question I have is, are we looking at reduced hours for the building? And if so, have we projected what timeframe we'd be looking to close the buildings?
Because you're also not just looking at custodial, but if you're closing the buildings earlier, you're going to save on electric and heat.
Yeah.
So, so the, the plan doesn't include at this moment, because we want to see what the board's feeling is about this, but we, we would, we would be closing the buildings earlier, we'd restrict weekend use, we wouldn't be running, we, because we have, because of our location, Shelton High School, for example, and, and other buildings as well, but Shelton High School is oftentimes used as a regional hub for cheerleading competitions and, and certain tournaments, sports tournaments and that sort of thing. That stuff would have to stop.
Or, or could it continue if there was, were fees associated with it?
If it was completely paid for, yes.
Right.
Yes.
So we're going to be looking at asking the Brownies to pay to use the.
Yep.
Could be.
I have to go to the rec center.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if taxes, look, if taxes weren't being cut, maybe there would be the revenue for us to handle this, but taxes are being cut and, and our budget's being cut. So now we are in the unfortunate position of having to look at raising fees because.
Well, those scouting parents can take the extra thirty-four dollars a year and pay for building.
Well, and frankly, the thing is technically we're getting a one point two three million dollar increase in our allocation, but we also got over eight hundred thousand dollars of additional expense because we can no longer use the city on buses. So our transportation cost for next year is going up by more than our total allocation. And that's before you consider things like the increase for medical and wage adjustments.
That's unnecessarily inflicted. Boom.
But it's what we have to live with. Okay.
Moving on.
We talked about preschool. Item nineteen, athletics and performing arts, pay to play. Two hundred thousand dollars. The, the missus recommendation, we. Got to collect a little bit more to offset some of the costs in that area, so.
So if you're looking at a. If you're looking at two hundred thousand there, you're looking at his fourth proposal, two fifty a student? Or where did that two hundred thousand come from out of what he gave you? Which one of those?
His was on sports. We were also talking about, so we were talking about athletics, athletics. We're also talking about some of the performing arts.
It's a combined number.
So what were you looking at per student?
Right, so this two hundred estimate is based on which proposal from this?
Pay to play.
Yeah, I know, but there's four different options on the table here.
Which one?
Based at the two hundred thousand and then another thirty thousand coming from the.
But you get the two hundred dollars per student plus the number.
Two hundred dollars per student.
He means it's number one, two hundred bucks a student.
That's one seventy.
And.
Okay, the rest of it's coming from the.
Two hundred, yeah.
Plus performing arts.
Okay. Now frankly, one of the other options that we had was number thirty-nine to increase pay to participate by fifty thousand dollars. I don't like pay to participate.
Me neither.
But I think that we need to do it. And I would rather increase pay to participate a bit and take less away from academics. Because we're making a lot of cuts to academics and we're not the Board of Sports and After School Activities. We are the Board of Education. And I think that our first obligation needs to be the classrooms.
Problem is there's more to school than just the books.
There is.
Yeah, but we're not here to.
And how much of that are we willing to cut out?
Yeah, but we're not here to, to turn out professional athletes or, or singers or anything. We're here to educate the kids. That's our bottom line. That's our job. And that's where our emphasis has got to be, and I agree with Mark, we're the Board of Education and that's where we got to spend our money. If it means pay to play so we can have another teacher in the classroom, that's what we got to do.
This is back to the notion of balance from my point of view. We need to have sports. We need to have athletics. It is a part of education. It's, it's perhaps not the priority like academics is, but we do need to have it. Sound mind, sound body is something that was part of the Roman Empire. This is an old idea, and we need to make sure that kids have an opportunity to play and be on teams and to become fit, et cetera, et cetera. But we just can't afford it in our budget. So we need to ask parents to, basically, we need to assess a fee on parents.
I, I would rather go with the fee than to cut sports.
So what?
I think we got to do both.
And, and will we have a sliding scale for that?
Yes.
Yes, we did last.
Just like, just like last time, yes. So kids that are free, on free and reduced lunch, would there be a sliding scale?
There's also a family cap.
Yes.
Yes.
And actually, one of the things that I think was a mistake with our last pay to play option was people who were on a sliding scale, if they hit the cap, they didn't get the discount, so to speak. So if the cap, using a made up number, if the cap was five hundred dollars for the family, if they got a break on the rates per sport, well, maybe the cap should be a little bit lower for somebody who's in pay to participate. Instead of five hundred, maybe it should be four hundred. Although in this case, we might be looking at maybe it should be six hundred instead of seven fifty. I don't know what the numbers are on that, but the cap should adjust.
I'm not an advocate for pay to participate, but we are forced into a very difficult situation here. If we were to recoup the eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars that is being assessed to us by virtue of this bus situation, if we were to recoup that money, I would be delighted to come back to the board with a list that did not include pay to participate.
Let's put that on the top of the list. I, I don't believe in pay to play either. When we went to the awards assembly, pages and pages of kids getting awards, they were all connected to sports. So even though they're not professional, they had a mix of sports and academic requirements to get that award. So academ, you know, sports builds personality and I think it's important, including the band and performing arts. So I agree with you on that.
And to be clear, I'm not against, I mean, I am against pay to participate in its entirety. But if we have to do it, I'm not against doing it within reason. Now, two hundred and fifty dollars a student is a lot. It's a lot of money. And it really preferences kids who come from money against those who don't. And it's unfair in a public school system setting. So within reason and if we had some way to reach out to the community and, and find groups that were willing to help support these kids that didn't have money so that they also could participate. I know that there are other, a couple of groups in Shelton that are looking at, at doing just that, but I, one of which I've already reached out to. But these are the kinds of things we would, we would need to look at as a board because it is important to do other things besides just learn from a book. I mean, the teamwork, self-confidence, it just simply that the savings on Ritalin. I mean, there's, there's so much benefit that comes from, from sports activities, especially, you know, through, at this age, teenagers, so.
Well, I know when we did have pay to, pay to participate before, there were several, several, at least several parents that I know of that because their children succeeded in sports and, and actually it helped them in their life learning. They actually sponsored a child and, you know, and we could set up possibly something like that because.
And how much money did we get from the athletic advertising?
Yeah.
Can that offset some of these costs?
That doesn't go to us.
Those are for the booster cups.
What about the money that needs to be reallocated that come from the food sales at the activities and the ticket sales?
That goes to the clubs, doesn't it?
The clubs that run it.
It does?
Yeah.
It's the money that goes to the city? Parking.
That's a ticket sale.
Ticket sales.
And that basically covers the cost of police to be there.
Security.
Security, you know, things of that.
So you see the kind of situation we're in. Instead of having a reasonably funded district that could provide sports and, and theater and drama for children, instead of that, we, we have to figure out who we can go and ask for money and who will sponsor this kid and which organization will sponsor that kid. That's another way to do it, and we may become a GoFundMe district.
Did you say that?
Yes.
Instead of drama for the kids, we have drama for the Board of Education.
If we're going to do it, we should, we should be proactively looking at ways to help fund that in, in maybe less traditional ways.
I, I just think that I would prefer to add a bit more to that particular area so that we can preserve some of the academics. And what can be done on the outside to minimize the impact of that, great.
But you're talking about the fifty K that's down in the optional.
Yeah.
Right.
So instead of two hundred, two fifty.
Right, but if we don't need to add that extra fifty K.
Then we won't.
But I think that if we do that, then we can look at some changes in other areas, for example.
I see, so not eliminating the sports at SIS and?
Well, perhaps that. Perhaps we do less of a reduction for school supplies.
That, that's one I'm firmly against reducing it, at least after what's going on last year.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you know, there's probably a black market for dry erase markers at SIS. It's one of those things where.
Go to the flea market and give you a call.
You know, we just.
Everyone has an option to get their dry erase.
Yeah, but I mean, we have shortages across the district on things like that. And I don't like having our teachers going out to Staples and buying stuff with their own money. And, you know, it, it, it's something I'd love to get, get rid of, okay?
I think, you know, we would have said it at the beginning, but this is probably good to remind us. I mean, this is at least your eleventh year where you got less than fifty percent of what you requested.
So is that, is that clear to everybody though? I think this merits.
The other thing we talked about as a group is what is going to be sustainable? You will be going through this process next year. If you're going to get one point, one million dollars, one point two million dollars, again, it was based on different staffing, but staffing alone next year is going to be more than, I don't know, at the time calculated, if it, without these reductions was over one point two million.
So this is, so just, so just to rewind the tape here, eleven years in a row of getting less than fifty percent of what we requested. And, and if this is, continues to be the new normal, this is going to be an annual process of cutting, cutting, reducing, reducing. Unless we become a GoFundMe district.
There is no low hanging fruit where we can come to you and say, these are the cuts we can make, going to be minimal impact on the district. You've been doing that for eleven years now, at least.
Longer.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I've got ten years of history that I've looked at. We got forty percent of your request. I think this year you got forty-three percent of your request.
I, I have suggested a, a plan, you've heard it before, so I beg your pardon for being redundant, but where we, where we work it out with the city and we say, look, let's have a three-year plan and go with three-year increments. And we get a two percent increase a year. We need more, but let's say we'll say two percent each year for three years in a row. So we don't have acrimony, so we can have a plan, like a business plan, and make our, make our decisions based on forward thinking. And, and that has been rejected.
What? Must make more sense.
The other piece regarding football, we're looking at numbers of custodial overtime. You spend substantially more, so if I look at last year.
What page are you on, Ed?
Page, I'm in the budget book.
Yeah.
So if you look at five, in the middle there, five one one five.
Twenty-six, Ed?
Yeah, page twenty-seven of the budget book. So if you look in the middle there, I've got code five one one five, other payments, classified staff, which is the overtime. So last year you spent three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. You had two sixty-three, uh, budgeted for this year, you had two sixty-four proposed for next year. Mid-year you had already spent one sixty-five. So in addition to that fifty, we're still trying to find other ways to find money because you've overspent your budget. Same with substitutes. If you look in the paragraph, I'll call it, up above total certified staff. If you look at the amount that you spent on substitutes, five one two one, temporary certified substitutes, you spent over one point, one million dollars last year. This year, while we bumped it up above what was budgeted this year, two years ago you spent more. So while we're talking about, you know, we're still looking for other ways to make up these line items. Because again, you'd be looking at a six percent budget item just to level everything with what you've actually spent in the past. So again, the budget is an estimate, and I understand, you know, people want everything to line up. We're working on saving another, up and beyond even what was budgeted, we've been looking for ways to save money. So when we talk about that fifty thousand dollar cut, we're looking for a hundred thousand dollars over what you've done in the past. So these are just numbers to numbers, but there are other stories behind that. But sixty percent cut to what you've asked for at least eleven years in a row. Mark says it's much more than that. Cuts are going to hurt and these are going to be, obviously digging deeper and deeper every year, the staffing and athletics. Cut to the assistant principal this year, that's it for elementary principals. You're not going to have that next year. So you're whittling down the number of options that you have. Think that goes without saying, but none of these were easy to come up with and say, let's propose this. So then we get into intermediate sports, reducing those. Three thousand dollar savings in, at the high school, reducing the boys and girls indoor track.
Good, except that my only comment to that is your cost per participant, indoor track is the lowest one.
Right.
So it's, it's the most cost efficient one.
Right.
I mean, heaven forbid we eliminate football, but that would, that, that's equal to the entire freshman sports program.
That's why I wanted to provide that sheet, and I understand your rationale there. And originally I had a different explanation on that. I put in the numbers that I'd look at, I'd hire some class per participant, but realizing, again, I wanted to honor your athletic director's request on what to cut there. So, but yeah, you're absolutely right. It's a hundred and eighty-three dollars and you got some sports, seven hundred dollars plus a participant.
Football's a very expensive sport, no question about it.
I understand, but, but, you know, freshman boys basketball, seven hundred and thirteen dollars per, per player.
Right.
As opposed to a hundred and eighty-five.
No, you're, the numbers are there. They're clear.
That's why I asked, yeah. I mean, if we're going to make cuts, make those most beneficial.
So you have the sheet to make an informed decision. Color printers at the elementary schools right now, each elementary classroom has a color printer in it. That comes with a substantial cost. We're proposing to remove those and provide more centralized printing with a limit on the number of color copies because those are the copies.
Is there a need for color?
Sometimes.
Sometimes.
Sometimes, but certainly not to the level we're doing, and we've been working on cutting back on that, so.
And, and the ink cartridges, whether it's laser or, or inkjet, that's the expensive part of it.
Well, we're paying for that.
It's premium.
The cost for copy, for maintenance.
Are the printers purchased or leased?
Pardon?
Are the printers purchased or leased?
Um, there's a combination, but the ones that we have are own, I believe.
The big ones are leased.
Yeah, the big ones are leased, I think, but the, what, what would we do with those color printers? Would they have any use to be, or could they be sold?
You just put black cartridges in there and you eliminate the color.
Right.
The printers are still used.
A lot of those printers will not work if they're out of color ink.
Yeah.
That's one of the problems I have with my laser printer.
Yeah, mine won't work at home. I have my same problem.
Yeah.
David Vito sent me something yesterday. He did find a company willing to purchase them. I said, we'll have to look at the city, what it had policies for disposal as well as city disposal we're doing it, but.
Used printers have very little value.
Yeah, yeah.
Generally, printers are priced cheap to get you to buy their ink.
Yeah, they make the money on the ink.
Yeah.
Definitely.
And so, and frankly, it also depends a bit on the printer as far as whether or not the color costs more.
I think the color cartridges for, for the printers in the, in the elementary schools are, like each classroom, it's a hundred, about a hundred dollars. And I think every, every teacher gets maybe two or three for the year and that's it.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, they're lucky to get that, but.
Yeah.
When you're talking about centralized copiers, are we talking more than just the teacher's room?
There's usually a little room.
Yeah, we just started talking about it. We talked like one per wing or, you know, whatever the case might be. You know, we'll take a look at it and.
Because I, I definitely, Strafford did it, but the problem is it's so far away to print anything, which is why I asked for a hard copy today. I mean, it, it's a five-minute walk to the nearest copier. And it's not like a kid can type a story and have it in his hand immediately because I don't have coverage to go down to the copier and get them all until lunchtime, you know.
Yeah, time is valuable too.
Yeah.
And instruction time, obviously, we don't, people, you know, studying, kind of walking, and they could be in the classroom doing things, but, um, we'll be talking about-
But if they're in a central location and teachers have a code that will only activate it, which is what we have, and then, you know, every John, Dick, and Harry coming down the hall can't use the copier, that would make sense.
We're going to do that as well. That'll cut down on outside routes, you know, high school coming in and finding rooms of paper missing, so, um, yeah.
I mean, the, the savings is important. Um, we, we look, this is, this is symbolic of us looking under, you know, every rock, but it is a sad state of affairs when, if you think of, those of you of a certain age, like my age, have seen the movie The Wizard of Oz, and it starts in black and white, and it goes to color. Well, we're going in the wrong direction.
One other thing though is going to use lasers for all of our printing instead of inkjets will be very cost-effective. When I was printing with inkjets last at home, I had a $1,700 printer, and it was using roughly $60 worth of ink a month. Then I went to a laser printer, and now my cost for ink is much less.
I know Dan DeVito is very cost-conscious, I've worked with him on a number of things, so I'm fully confident he will take all of that into consideration, but I know he is.
And other considerations for the color printers are some students require-
Yeah.
They see better with certain colors, and so you cannot eliminate them totally.
Oh, we're not eliminating them.
There has to be, there has to be accessibility for a teacher to use a color printer, especially when it's-
There are some assessments that require color, and, yeah. No, we're, we're not going to eliminate it completely, but we're going to restrict it severely, and that's unfortunate, but that's-
The way it is.
Field trips, reducing the line item by 50%.
Can I ask every year, what, what does it pay for?
What is field trip pay for?
It's not sports, is it?
We've had a field trip line item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is, who's going on these trips?
Because, I mean, when I do a field trip, I take the cost of admission and the cost of bus and divide by the number of kids.
And then usually, and the school usually has a little kitty somewhere that, to pay for children that, that can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have some in district, you have school-to-school trips, you know, something's happening, so that's why we left some money for that, but things that you talked about, museums, other trips, they'll have to find a different way.
We have a couple of parents here, do we have field trips that you haven't had to pay for?
Uh, yes, some, but we also had to pay for, majority we do, at least, contribute some.
What are some of the free ones? Because those are the ones that are clearly involved here.
Some, I remember, um-
Ones that they don't have to pay for or something like that.
I can't ever remember a free field trip, ever, in 40 years.
I feel like that there was maybe at one or two, but the majority are-
$11,000 is not going to be a lot of field.
What about the bus, though? Who pays for the bus to transport for the field trip?
Usually, that's included in the price.
Yeah.
I can get more details and see what's been spent on that line.
Does it cost something for the storm things?
Easy enough to do.
Is there any insurance?
I think that's a core, that's a, that's a-
Is there any insurance?
And we didn't pay for that.
The insurance, no?
I don't know.
It's, it's easy enough to find out.
Okay. I always wondered what that field trip was.
And I know I've asked you before, and I always feel like I'd still come out of the discussion not knowing.
It won't be a long list, as you can see, that number.
With that number, no.
In a budget over $70 million, that's a very small fraction.
Instructional software, um, can reduce, uh, some options there, you grant funding where possible.
What will be the impact of that? What instructional software are we going to be eliminating from our budget, what would be the impact? Maybe, maybe that's better directed.
Well, Dan, well, Dan gave us, and, and we've worked with the, the, the Teaching and Learning Group. I mean, basically, it's just to cut back on some of the things that we think aren't as essential. So it's, you know, we're, we're doubling down on Newsela, you've heard about Newsela at some of our meetings, so, so we want to keep that in place, but some of the other pieces, I, I can get a list of them for you, but they're, they're relatively small pieces.
Okay.
Are they things like-
So it wouldn't be a huge impact on the kids?
No.
Okay, all right.
We answered, yeah. Nothing that they requested will be cut, if you will.
Thank you.
Just some of the individual software, is that what might have been in one building and that? The others, you know, those types of things, so.
Is it like we do-
Just in district-wise.
Is it like we're using the number of seats we buy on a particular program, or?
Well, you can see the number here is so small, this, this is, this is really some of the odd stuff that's not standardized. We are, we are in the process of standardizing our use of, of, of software so that all students have similar experiences regardless of what school they go to.
But the major ones, we're funding, um, our WEA, Newsela, uh, now.
And we, as you can see, we went to everyone. We went to principals, we went to the athletic director, we went to IT. We said, look, we need some cuts, we need your best suggestions, and we talked about these things. So that's where these things came from.
Um, instructional supplies, so we included, um, 87,500, or 50% increase to that. So we're taking a quarter of the new money, if you will.
I'm not in favor of cutting that at all.
I agree.
What, what supplies are you talking about?
Instructional supplies, I was trying to-
Exactly.
Well, that would be up to the building.
Yeah, those are often defined by the teacher.
Like the expo markers, the paper, the construction paper. I mean, we've, we've been cutting that for years.
Again, trying to build that back, remember it was 500,000, went down to 175, so again, trying to incrementally increase that. So it would still be 66,000 more than there is this year, um, but certainly, again, would be nice to, uh, build that.
So we're not really cutting from what we had this year, we're still raising, but just reducing-
Reducing from what we asked for.
Yeah, it says reduce the new funding from 87,500 to 66,300.
I still want to do that.
How much have we spent this year, Ed?
Uh, I can, can get that for you.
I'm pretty sure we've pretty much blown through it.
I don't doubt it, but-
We had an ad, again, from, uh, some reserves, we provided, uh, a bump to teachers, so you're, you're definitely over what you had budgeted on this year. But we went through and figured out on a per-student basis, you know, what we could give them to, we heard.
I really think that's one of the ones we need to be trying to look, looking at, taking away. And that's one of the things, for example, that I think increasing pay to participate is justified for.
Uh, one academic support, tutor.
Is there a particular place that's coming from, or?
Uh, I'm not sure. Have to look at that reality of, uh, we had four that were proffered. We were able to move three additional ones down below the 2.4 billion threshold that we were trying to reach. But again, all of these are needed, um, program services, people, um, yeah, you know, we did have some savings that I highlighted earlier, but, um, all of these are, you know, just, do you want my left arm or do you want my right arm, so?
Both. Be mine, thank you.
Uh, building repairs, so we, again, try to bump that line up, um, adding another $50,000. So we reduce traditional funding, cut that in half, but again, and a list of repairs out there, we can spend 10 times that amount, so, again, we probably end up going to the city and saying, we need some money for whatever, as we've done several times this year.
They own the buildings, we're just tenants. The landlord's responsible for maintenance of the building.
Well, and as you know, preventive maintenance is actually a way of-
It's not in the cities, Ralph.
Well, but as you know, it saves money over time, if you, if you have a PM program in place.
Uh, the other is taking the transportation director out of the budget. I did talk to Durham yesterday, they would have brought the position under where this can come back. Increase, uh, the, the-
The concern that I have about that is if we do that, then he's no longer our guy. And so that gives us a lot less spin control. And I don't know, that's something we really need to think about, is whether or not the advantage of saving the money is worth giving up the control for.
Yeah, there's the opportunity cost, so we don't cut that, we-
Control for, I'm sorry, I'm not calling it.
$50,000.
Explain control. We still control, we, so, somebody's going to manage the contract, and that would fall under it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and my discussion with Durham was with the under, again, they have updated software, we do not.
Yeah.
They have routing software, so, um, it's not they would be incurring any new, I, I understand what you're saying, Mark, and that's-
Somebody calls up because they're having a problem, and when Ed is our guy, or Jim is our guy, we can call Jim up and say, hey, Jim, so-and-so's kid is not getting picked up.
Well, we still do, we still do.
We still do that. But, but, but issues usually, and it's been a long time since my kid rode, rode the bus, many years ago. You know, that happens at the beginning of the school year. As, as the school year goes on, those issues should, should decrease significantly. If they don't, then we have a real problem.
Yeah, that's right. It's in the first two to three weeks of school where it's a lot of that.
But while we're talking about transit, uh, transportation, opting out is something that we don't do. And it's certainly, a lot of districts do that.
Yes.
And that would reduce, if we had parents agree that they weren't going to send their kids and they opted out of the program, that would reduce the number of buses that we have to have on the road, which would reduce our transportation costs. The other thing we need to look at is school starting time, and is there a way that we can manipulate the times that we can increase bus runs from three to four runs per bus? Again, reducing the number of bus runs.
So, so I, we are going to put together, we are actually putting together a survey of parents to see if they want to or not avail themselves of, of the transportation opportunity for their kids. I, I think your, your notion of changing the school times, which I've seen done, and I've been part of doing it before, it's, it should probably go together with redistricting. Because if you're going to do something, then that's a time when you say, okay, we're making some changes, and, and that's the time-
That's fine, and, and that's a long-term thing.
Yeah.
But we really need to look at that. It's a huge, huge expense for us, so we need to try and, and control it as best we can.
Agreed.
I agree. If we were to do an opt-out program, what potentially do you think, what kind of status could we be looking at? Do you have any idea?
It would really be a guess at this point.
I know it would be a guess, but I'm just curious, like, what kind of money we're talking about?
Are we talking about $20,000, or are we talking about like $100,000?
I hear that the buses are half, you know, at least in high school, they're half, half the quarter bowl.
Sure, they're driving.
You know, so, you know, you're, you're going to save there, but, but yeah, without doing it, you can talk to other districts that, that have the policy.
Yeah, one of the advantages of the redesigning, you are bringing in a tough transportation company in the country, TASS, is the, the expert. I mean, if you look on any article on transportation, they're, they're quoted as, so I, I think that will be the prime opportunity to have a professional provide some recommendations on how you can maximize routes.
But it, it also does depend on when you do look at the buses, because if you just look at a bus while it's in the middle of a route-
Oh, yeah, I understand.
If it's halfway through the route, half the kids that were on it are presumably going to be off. So, or maybe half the kids haven't been picked up yet. But we do have some vacancies on the buses, and certainly if we can do something to, you know, tighten things up a little bit there. My understanding is that we already are not actually providing a seat for every fanny.
Right.
We are being a little bit conservative in how much we're cutting, but according to the state, we should have more seats than we do.
The one area that we're looking at immediately is, are the number of buses going to the parochial schools? So we do think we'll be able to save perhaps a bus there, as well as, um, unless here. So we are looking at that, I had conversations with Durham on looking at the routes. I think Mr. Burns has done a great job with that, but our software is 10 years outdated, hasn't been updated in 10 years, so, um, I think we'll have some more, me and Paula, if you will, to, to help us with those things.
If our software is that old, do we even have some of the new streets that have been footed?
No, no, and again, to Mr. Burns' credit, he came to me this year. We looked at it, and we said, again, this was, we had to make a commitment by March to the company's upgrade, and we're like, well, we don't even know what's going to be happening, so we didn't. But he's been requesting that for a number of years, my understanding, and again, money's not been there to do it, so. So that gets us, that list gets us to the 2.4 million dollars. And then below, some other things that we have talked about, uh, that some of the people involved put out as possibilities, again, not recommending that they happen, but just, you know, we need to keep cutting, what kind of things could we look at there? So, um, I did pass out to you, um, and out on the elementary class sizes that are funded within the budget. So, you know, that information as well.
Ed, could you read out, if, if you don't mind, you have it right in front of you, could you read out the class sizes proposed for Mohegan next year? Just as an example, there are many schools, but just as an example, let's, let's look at Mohegan.
Okay, so, Mohegan, um, next year?
1916, 1817, 18.
So starting with kindergarten, 19, grade one, 16, grade two, 18, grade three, 17, grade four, 18.
Those are our proposed class sizes for next year at Mohegan, with these cuts.
Oh, that's pretty good.
How, how?
By moving people around, so a lot of this idea that we're, that we're going to find new ways to move people, a lot of that's been done in order, yeah. So we've taken into consideration very seriously the notion of having low class sizes, teachers, teacher-student ratio being reasonable and, and meeting the needs that kids have and parents have expressed.
And is Mohegan, right now, the one that's, that's bursting at the seams, where the class size considerations right now are?
Um, well-
It's Elizabeth Shelton, isn't it?
Well-
Well, ESS is bursting at the seams, but which is the two schools that have the 26?
Right.
Mohegan had a 26 this year.
Yeah, okay.
And Mohegan teacher there next year.
Okay, so, and what's the other school that had the 26? We had two of them, I thought.
Long Hill.
Long Hill.
And we're, the thing is, we are-
We're okay with Long Hill next year, yeah.
We are still, though, looking at a couple of schools that'll have 23.
23, 23.
Yeah, I see that.
23 is not horrible, but it's not great.
And kindergarten at Sunnyside is currently two?
Yes.
So that's taking into account the high enrollment by having three teachers, which I was asked about.
These two schools that have got the 23 kids, we will not have an empty classroom because of this setting, will we?
Yes. Oh, yeah, we will, right?
We'll have an empty classroom?
Well, so, can you reframe the question? So at Booth Hill School-
Booth Hill and Elizabeth Shelton have the, we have 23 kids average in third grade at Booth Hill and fourth grade at ESS. Will we have with this distribution an empty classroom in each one of those schools? That if we had an additional teacher, we'd be able to reduce those class sizes to about 17 or 18?
Would we?
Would we have an empty classroom?
Reduce me a position. I currently have five positions in fourth grade, and I'm scheduled to go down to four. My third grade level has been at the 23, 24 number.
So you would have a room?
Yes.
Although that room could be used for other purposes, is my understanding as well. Yes. There you go.
What an awful, gee. How about at Booth Hill?
Yes, there may be, there may be an empty classroom. Again, I, I hesitate to call them empty because that, that gives the impression that they're dark, but-
I'm sure there'll be something to fill them up.
Well, in other words-
That's not the question. I'm thinking of-
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Can you make the ratio, right? Yeah, I see what you're saying. Can you make the ratio, right?
Can, yeah, if we find money, and we're, when we're talking about $140,000 for two more teachers, you know, so that we can reduce those class sizes down. I mean, I'd be willing, I'd hate to say, cut something so that we can have, again, reduce the class size better for the kids, you know, for their education.
Academic support centers currently taking up a place? In every building.
Yes.
That's an important thing.
Yeah, oh, no, I agree. Counting room. I have a question down on the other options. I'm presuming the French program is the cost of the salary? And is that a low-enrolled program out of the four languages, or why is that suggested?
18 students are requesting French and 149 are requesting Spanish.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The, the trouble with this, and this is not.
But that's SHS, this is SIS?
No.
It doesn't say.
SHS. If we were to eliminate the, that $52,848 amount, that would end the French program. That would not be a reduction of the French program. That would be an elimination of the French program.
At the high school.
So what we have now is, we have one teacher that would be teaching French and is also teaching, if I read this correctly, other subjects.
Yeah, sometimes they teach another language, yeah. They're dual-certified.
Wow.
I'm not, you can see, I'm not advocating for that, because I think that we ought to have more languages, not fewer.
Okay. Does anybody see other options, things in the other options area that they like?
Get your list out there.
I don't, no, that's already on the other.
I thought long and hard about that.
The math, wait, we're still looking at those at the bottom.
Yeah.
The math specialist and the reading specialist currently service students, or teachers, or both?
Both.
Both?
Yeah.
Coaching and small group instruction.
Okay.
Yeah, and what I would say with the math and reading, we still have a high number of students still not receiving the level of service.
That's your tier three.
In some cases, yes.
So what would be the impact, then, of this resigning, I'm not clear, eliminating a half a reading consultant and a math specialist at SIS?
Less support.
We're literally removing those positions away from, these were requested increases, or this is what we have now and we're cutting it?
What we have now would, would we cut?
What we already have.
We would cut.
We can't get where we need to be without making cuts to current services.
But that, I understand.
That's another option.
Trying to look at, I mean, if your concern is academics, this is, this is a big impact.
Yeah, I, I'm not interested.
This is a recommendation by the principal to save the school of innovation, I shouldn't say the school of innovation, but to continue the school of innovation without impacting many more programs. It was either that or give up another ELA teacher, social studies teacher.
Yeah, these are the lesser, too evil kind of arguments.
This is the principal's recommendation, so.
In, in the list of proposed options that make up the 2.422, I'm going to ask the elephant in the room. There's a lot of redeploying of staff. What layoff are we looking at?
It could be between five and six teachers and one administrator, as we talked about earlier.
And those are classroom, or?
It's, and we look at them as, in terms of this, we look at them as humans, let me say, and professionals, but we look at them in terms of this particular budget work as full-time, you know, FTEs.
Certified staff.
So typically, they, they could, they could come from anywhere that, that a certified staff could teach.
So you're not talking tutors or pairs or anything like that?
Not tutors and pairs, in this case.
So five to six certified staff.
Let's remember, it's hard to find tutors, by the way. Remember, we've had this discussion for many years now. It's, it's easy to say, let's have more tutors. It's hard to find tutors.
There'll be some really good ones from Strippers that'll be listed.
Well, because they'll, they'll go elsewhere.
You know, you know, you know, from your, you know, the tutor, that's a great tutor that you love having around, takes a job somewhere and.
And many of them are certified, so if there's a certified teaching position, they're offered daily bus. Which is, you know, certainly upward mobility for the tutors.
But with these, with these five or six positions gone, we will, in the elementary school, eliminate the two over-attended classes, the two at 26, will come down.
Yes.
Okay, so what aren't we going to teach? I mean, I, I guess, you know, we're having few, fewer physics classes, fewer chemistry classes, fewer English classes, you know, are, is that where the, you know, shift is going to be? The high school classroom is gonna be filled with more kids?
And can we have a list of those courses, those rooms, with how many students are in each section? Because that would be helpful for us to know if we can combine two business classes. Can we combine?
Yeah.
You know, but we never get the, we never get the printouts of the students for intermediate, or.
Scheduling.
Yes, but I don't care about the scheduling. I just wanna know.
Well, the scheduling is the, is the key. We can't not care about it.
Well, I do care about it, but I wanna know the numbers. I wanna know how many kids are in French one, how many kids are in French two? Each one of those sections, do they have their own teacher? Can they be combined?
Are we gonna reduce AP classes?
Right.
So this is a series of questions that keep coming, so anytime you're ready, I'll pause and something.
Who wants to pick a list, Chris?
They're all good questions. I, I would just say the following, that the issue, an example of, should we look at class sizes and combine two classes into one? That's an administrative decision, not a board decision. You could, you could look at how many teachers do we need?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, but not, not, should we combine those two classes into one? Should, should we, should we reduce our budget for AP courses? Maybe. That would be a board decision. Which ones, administrative decision? So, so, in other words, this is where, this is where a board is not the administration. You're, you have a.
We don't wanna micromanage.
No.
That's not our position. Other people like to micromanage. We're not gonna micromanage.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, and obviously, these are very important decisions that you have to make, and they're very difficult and painful decisions, but at the end of the day, which, you know, how many kids are in a chemistry class is something that we really have to work out. And it changes, because right now, as Mark was saying, the, the, the scheduling process is underway for next year. So, so I couldn't give you, I could give you a list that looks at the past, how many kids were in, but I can't give you a list for next year, because it's not finishing.
We also run into situations where if a particular class is only available during one period, you could have a kid who needs to take two classes that are only available at the same time, if there's only one section. So having multiple sections of classes could very well be necessary in order for students to be able to accomplish their goals.
Danny DeVito can come up with a program and eliminate all that.
Okay. Is there, is there anything under the other options for consideration that people feel that we should be considering, and I have mentioned pay to participate?
Can I ask a question about freshman sports? Rather than eliminating, now, I don't know if I'm going over an administrative board headline here, but rather than eliminating the program, can we just wrap freshman sports, we had the discussion with.
Into JV?
Into JV, right, so that freshmen still have an opportunity to participate, but we're not paying for separate coaches and transportation and all that stuff?
So the number, so we did, we have talked about exactly that, and, and in some cases, that's possible. In many cases, the numbers are too big.
Right, okay.
Yeah, if you added 34 football players to 92, you know, I think might be a little bit stressful.
Because 92 is the, is the total varsity JV freshman, right?
Again, if there is a resolution, a last-minute resolution to our use of the buses issue, then I will be very pleased to come back to the board with a list that does not include pay-to-play and reduce some of these reductions in athletics, because I think it is important.
I would think that if we're going to have pay-to-play, and even if we get some relief on the bus trend, if we're going to keep freshman sports, you know, then we would keep pay-to-play. Because, you know, that to me, $55,000, that's a classroom teacher. That's, or, or a couple of tutors, or, or, you know, math specialists.
I'd love to have that problem. At the moment, we don't.
No, no, I understand that. I understand, Mark, but, but part of what we have to do here is we define the priorities. And then we leave it up to the administration to fill in the blocks, so, so that we maintain the priorities. And I think that's the thinking that we have to have.
Okay. On lines one through 28, are there any that people feel strongly against? Okay, Kate?
I feel strongly against assistant principal and instructional supplies.
Okay. Are there any others?
No, but could you, could you give me a little clarification?
Yeah, what are you asking us for?
No, no, not clarification on that, but clarification on line number three, proposed program enhancements, those cuts. I know some of these additions that we were asking for in staffing were to be able to engage in new programs. There were programs available, we just needed staff to manage them. So by eliminating these positions, will, will we still be able to maintain the status quo? Or this is going to impact just potential enhancement?
I believe it's just enhancement.
The music was not a enhancement, but we still, we still have a music program at SIS that would remain unchanged. Correct?
Right.
Okay. I just needed that clarification. Same with the science at SIS and SJS, I know.
They're doing without those positions this year. They were hoping to get those.
And if we move the school of innovation program into the eighth grade, eliminating a science position at SIS is not, is not an issue? We can still do that?
It won't be fun, but it'll still be possible.
It, it's very difficult, and, and the principal, Mr. Serenich at SIS, has, has worked very hard and been very creative to try and do his best, and, and I, and I, and I don't wanna speak for him, but, you know, he's not happy about this. This is, this has not been a, you know, but, but he's worked, he's done his best to come up with a reasonable plan to make it work. And it, and it will work, but Ed's bigger point that he, that he's raised now on several occasions is that we can't keep doing this year after year, because then we won't have a school of innovation. Then we won't have a French, then, you know, next year, that's what we're talking about when we say, okay, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna teach one language, not three, and et cetera, et cetera. That's just an example, by the way.
And through your, and through your movement of people, though, we were able to staff the STEM lab full-time next year, as you explained to us in our last meeting, by moving people around and changing scheduling. So that program is going to continue and improve next year.
Yes, and that will include the addition, by the way, you'll see, I believe, Ms. Penozzo, you posted it yesterday, the tech ed person?
On Monday.
On Monday, yes, thank you. In other words, there will be a grant-funded position that will allow for that to happen. So when, so when you see that posting, that's what that is.
People need to understand that, that's, because the first thing I can see, they're hiring more people, and they say they don't have enough money.
Right. Well, there's a lot of people in the stands that like to critique what the players on the field, right, but, you know, as Teddy Roosevelt said, right?
And, and I do wanna say, I understand that we can't, if we're not getting money, we can't enhance what we're doing. We've gotta try, but the whole music thing grates at me that we took a step forward this year, and this is gonna create us two steps back. And we're gonna be back behind where we were.
I wish I could disagree with you, but I cannot.
Just making that point, I wish there were a way around it.
To your point, Darla, so what I'm looking for right now is of the items numbered one through 28, are there any items in there as proposed reductions or revenue enhancements that people are strongly opposed to?
Well, I have another question about one of these items, before we go on to that. When we say we're talking about limiting sports, does that include all the stipends that go with them? Because I don't see stipends listed anywhere for anything.
Well, if you.
If you're proposing to eliminate sports, then we need to eliminate stipends, but there's nothing here about that.
Officials is on here.
It's embedded.
There's a column for.
I mean, the obvious is, if you eliminate freshman sports, you're not paying stipends to freshman coaches.
Okay, that's all right.
So that's already baked in.
Okay.
Okay, are there any other items, one through 28, that people are opposed to?
I do not want pay-to-play.
Okay.
I understand it too, but I know from being a teacher, if a kid can't do it academically by George, they're usually really good in, in sports, and they need that opportunity to shine. So I am not in favor of that. Yes, but pay-to-play may eliminate an opportunity for some of those kids. And I just am not in favor of it.
Okay, does anybody have anything else in that category?
I just think the administrative interns, I think if you're gonna eliminate the two, you should eliminate the four. Figure out how much it costs.
Well, the concern I have about that is we're already talking about eliminating the assistant principal. And one of the things that has been a chronic complaint is that we haven't done enough promotion from within. Now, the assistant principal position obviously worked terrific for us from the standpoint of the very first person we put in that position was hired one year later to take over a building, and she's doing a great job. The administrative interns were something that we had as a part-waste step from classroom teacher towards administration.
Right, but we're losing, we're losing the two elementary administrative interns, and we're losing the elementary assistant prin, assistant principal.
Yeah.
So we're losing, we're wiping out all of the elementary, everything.
Well, no, because we still have a couple of administrative interns.
But not elementary.
But not at elementary. It's not fair distribution.
We don't have any administrative interns in this case? I thought we still had at least one.
We have, we have two, and they're at both of Perry Hill.
Okay.
Which also has.
Well, Perry Hill is considered.
Yeah, how many students at Perry Hill?
Sorry, I'm sorry?
How many students at Perry Hill? Oh, about 700. Equal to two elementary schools.
Equal to, yeah, actually equal to.
So why can't we, so, and again, this is an administrative decision, but you move one of the interns and let them function with, at the elementary school, split, split it up. Because you've got an assistant principal for 700 kids, where we don't have any assistant principals for the, for two schools that are the same size. If you do it just pupil ratio, then you split it up. At least give them some help.
I would, I would prefer that once we have a budget number that we could, but that, that's a rational idea, but we should remember that it's not just about kids, it's also about evaluation of teachers, and, and effective evaluation of teachers.
Yeah, but we need to reeval, reevaluate the evaluation.
Chris, that, if, if all our teachers, based on the evaluation information that you provided us for, for last year, that 90% of the teachers were above expectations or far exceeded expectations, I'm not sure what value the evaluations have. If we don't have anybody performing at the low end, that they gotta work with.
We got good teachers.
Well, and also.
Well, then we need to do less, then Carol has done a great job, and we need to do less evaluations.
Right.
Yeah, it's mandated.
I don't think that's what Carol said.
Evaluation is mandated by the state, and we have to provide a report on every certified staff in an evaluation report in October. So that's a state mandate that we would be hard-pressed to.
And I'm not saying to, 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 but what I've heard is that we do far in excess of what is necessary. And if we cut back to what is necessary, I hate to be, we just do the minimum, but that's kind of where we're at. And then, then we free up time for the principals to do other things.
Well, that's another whole discussion.
Evaluation is a method of support for teachers.
Yeah, it's more than, it's more than just, so I, I understand what you're saying, the, the scoring issue, and, and your concern about that, which you, which you have been, you know, consistent about, and your concern has been, you know, heard. But with that said, the evaluation process is more than just a scoring, you know, and a checklist. It's also discussions and dialogue and working with teachers to adapt to new ways of instruction and try things and, and that sort of thing. So it's, it's more than just get in there, score them, and get out.
There's coaching performance.
But they could still do that, you know?
But it's still.
That's what those Wednesday morning meetings are for.
But it still takes time. We need to be aware of what's happening.
How many teachers, will we, how many teachers will we, will we lose approximately?
If we have to cut the full $2.4 million between five and six.
Between five and six, okay, and they would, I would assume most of them would be beginning teachers?
It would be based on the contract and seniority.
And seniority, okay.
Yeah.
So then. So then.
Okay.
My last comment is, have we even considered taking furlough days? I've been reading about that for several school systems right now in the news. We've had this in the past, and it has bailed us out to give us time to see what the new numbers are, what the redistricting plan will be. It would buy us some time. That is a very feasible thing, it's been done before in Shelton, I know, because I've given several days over a period of a couple of years.
That's it.
And they're doing it now in other school systems.
This is the one where you say, ask the teachers November eighth on your list?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you go without a payday this year, and you get it back at some point down the future.
But all that does, but all that does is shift the cost, is shift the cost from this year to some other point in time. So you've still got to pay the piper. I mean, that's been the problem with the teacher's pension plan. They keep shifting it from year to year and not fully funding it. That's all we're doing, and we're creating legacy costs that we spent 200, 300,000 dollars on legacy costs every year that we can't get out of.
Well, I agree, but this year is so unusual that I think for one year, we might be able to do.
This year is not so unusual.
Well, it is, because we never had all these bus transportation problems.
It seems last year was easier.
Last year was easier in part because there was a strong effort to try to have a nice, friendly budget as part of establishing a good working relationship. There was also the uncertainty about what would happen on the state level. And to their credit, the city did say, even if the state cuts the funding to the city, we will make you hold. And, you know, that was a pretty good offer on their part when we were looking at a possible cost shift to the city of millions of dollars, which thankfully didn't happen. But, I mean, we did lose eleven teachers and an administrator last year. And that hurt.
Thank you.
Now, we have, I know Darlissa has got some proposed alterations.
Pete Bormer has a list.
I don't know if others have any, but why don't we start off with Darlissa's list and discuss them?
Well, you covered most of my thinking. I would truly like to keep everybody and grow our system. And I thought long and hard about this when we started our budget process. And I'm thinking back to our election campaign that we had onstage with everybody, and we were asked the questions, what do you think is important? And most of us said, services for students come first. And so that's face-to-face service with students. We're on all kinds of newspapers and slides and tapes and everything saying the bulldoze effect. Here's the students in the center.
The core.
The core is the students. And then as people go out, not that they're not important, because I think everybody is important, however, we have to consider students' needs first. So to that plan of thinking, I came up with, and I don't really want to do this, but I'm thinking, well, we have an assistant superintendent, perhaps someday they may want to retire. It's a chance to reorganize our system to a 21st century conglomerate. It's a chance to reorganize central office. We can add administrative assistance with less cost.
But it's not something we can do right now.
No, but that's, you know, that wasn't the assignment, so.
Yeah, well, what here is feasible right now?
I'm thinking about the reconfiguration, if we redistrict, and I'm thinking, do we need two supervisors of elementary curriculum? No, we probably could do one that handles STEM and literacy.
Those are different certifications, though.
Well, if you are an administrator and you have your O-92, you're supposed to be able to do both.
Well, our job descriptions, our job descriptions provide that our supervisor of literacy also has a reading degree, because she evaluates our 8.5 reading consultants. So she's mandated by the state to have a reading degree, which she does have. And our assistant, our supervisor of STEM evaluates our math consultants, so she's mandated to have a math certification. So the certifications are somewhat different for those two individuals.
Okay. Well, I'm just looking forward, because it's not to say that there isn't somebody out there that has both, and I love both of you, and I think you're doing a good job. So don't think I'm aiming at you, I'm just looking at positions and money. I was thinking about one tech person, as we get all this new technology and equipment in, there should be less breakdowns, there should be less need for technology.
No, but we still have old equipment, but we need to keep running.
Well, I real, well, if you get new stuff, it shouldn't be breaking down, or you bought the wrong company.
But we're still stuck with the old stuff until we can get everything replaced.
It's more than just breaking down, too. There are other things.
Yeah, I know. Well, I'm just, this is my stream of consciousness, how can we save money in the budget?
Brainstorming here.
This is my brainstorming.
That's right, keep going.
Okay, we already covered the assistant principal, we beat that to death. The interventionists, yes, I understand, they help teachers, and, but 80/20 for students? No, tutors work 100% with kids. So I would prefer that.
What kind of financial impact would that be? Are interventionists paying significantly?
Well, there's what, five or six of them?
They're certified teachers.
$450,000.
Right. And we did, we did put 400,000 into it, and our scores went up 1%. So I'm not sure about, you know, the effectiveness there.
Well, it takes a little time to see effectiveness.
Right. We've already talked about number six with the interns, we talked about stipends, we talked about the furlough days, we talked a little bit about preschool, that's a whole nother discussion that we could have. Transportation costs, I want to give it to the city, I don't ever want to hear about buses ever again for as long as I live, let them take over.
But we're still, we're still the ones mandated to get them there.
Oh, I know.
And if the city falls down.
Happy to give them the costs.
Yeah.
It's the other stuff.
I just, you know, okay, I think they're willing to take over that cost, please, take over my electric bill as well. I'm being facetious, sorry. Eliminating the cost.
Keep going.
Eliminating the costly evaluation process for teachers, it takes up a lot of time, time that administrators could be spent actually doing other things. I am not in favor of pay to play, absolutely no way, that is not fair to the students. I have to speak for my former students and future students, no. You're already reassigning people, I like your tuition idea for preschool, that's a good idea, because it is, you know.
Yeah.
I like your idea of reducing field trips and conference traveling and, you know, little things like that, but it all adds up. So I don't know why you only passed out mine, did anybody else have thoughts?
Well, I went off of.
That you want to air for the public?
I went off of my list. I went off of my list, but I, and I just wanted to ask, did you, maybe somebody, how much does it cost for preschool? Like, I saw the signs by Holy Trinity, they're doing preschool for three, you know, for three and four-year-olds. Does anybody, Kristen, do you know how much Holy Trinity is charging for the preschool?
I can't say specifically the exact two penny amount. They offer like two to five-day options.
Okay.
So it could go anywhere from about a thousand to about like three thousand.
A month.
A year?
A $1,000 for a year of preschool?
If it's for a day, she's talking about like.
You don't have to transport them, do we?
They do transport them, because they have to.
Preschool?
Yes.
Do we try to limit it to one or so conversations at a time? Okay.
I can answer your question. Okay, thank you.
Pre-aid program at Wesley was five days a week from nine to one, and it was $5,600. It's not that much.
Okay, $5,600.
For five days a week?
For five days.
$5,600?
That's how many hours in a day?
And that's like from nine to one?
But he is now in fourth grade, so.
It could have gone up, yes.
Okay, thank you.
My kids went there, too.
Okay, actually, before we go on to other things, I want to go back and quickly address something on Darlissa's, or actually, a couple of things on Darlissa's. On items one through six, a concern that I have is that would be a significant restructuring of the way we work. And one of the things that I look at is that we have a history of being funded well below average and having student achievement that is well above average. And so making fundamental changes to how we do our work is a bit on the scary side to me. I don't want to see us go backwards in terms of student achievement.
But Mark, restructuring is not a bad process. We are restructuring with strategic plan, we are restructuring with the school of innovation.
Right.
This is a modern life, this is the 21st century. Schools are not going to look like this. Central office is not going to, we have to start putting things in place now that's going to support these new initiatives that Chris has brought to us. These are good initiatives. They promise a future that is not like stuff we've been doing over and over and over. It's time to stop doing that, to listen to what he's saying. And now we have to develop an administrative pattern that's going to restructure and promise and help people to do that. I feel very bad about the administrators at some of the schools who are doing actually two administrators' jobs. You know, when you talk about school of innovation and running the regular school, that's two jobs.
Yes, but you're talking about eliminating.
And I think we need to go, if we've got to do it, let's, this is an opportunity, I know nobody likes change. I don't like change. However, this is not just a black cloud, it's an opportunity to do something different. We don't have to follow any other school system.
But you're talking about eliminating support structures that helped us to get where we are.
No, I'm not. I'm adding assistant, administrative assistants, I'm adding tutors, I'm adding elementary curriculum advisors. This is new terminology and stuff that's out there. We have to move forward to support the new initiatives that we have. Having the same configuration is not doing that. And I just think this is an opportunity. Is it going to be perfect? No. Do we have to have change? Yes. It's unfortunate that the change is being pushed because of the budget. You know, I'm not happy about that. However, I do think good things can come of this. And we don't really have to lose people, if you read what else I wrote, we can take people who have these skills, good skills, and use them in different ways, you know? So that's my answer to you, and I'll be quiet.
I just see, for example, STEM and literacy supervisors, these are people who perform a very valuable service for us.
But they have two jobs, too, to your point.
Yes. I mean, you know, eliminating HR.
Assistant.
Assistant.
Not Carol.
It might be, not Carol. It might be somebody.
Could I just address, could I, could I address your comment here on this page elimination? So six years when I came to the district, the office, the office I currently work in had one HR person, a director, and then three support staff secretaries. I eliminated in my first year two of those secretaries because they were doing manual jobs, such as manually entering attendance data, as well as phone calling substitutes to the tune of over $60,000 a year. So two of those positions were eliminated, and we look much different than we did six years ago, because we've implemented good technology. So technology has taken over much of, some of the work that we do. So in six years, I eliminated about $60,000 in clerical costs, times six, that's $360,000 cumulatively. I already gave at the office.
Well, I think, I think that's wonderful, because you made your department more efficient.
Yes.
But I think the point that Darlissa is really making is that it's time for the board to form a small committee and to look at the structure of how we manage the school system, from the superintendent on down, and look at how technology is changing things, what the demands are, and then come up with, in consult with our superintendent, and come up with a plan going forward. We can't change things in the next year's budget, but in 2019, in 2020, and 2021, we need to look at where we want to be so that we are, I hate to go lean manufacturing, but on-time delivery, but that's what we've got to look at, because, you know, things are different. In technology, we have to use it to our advantage.
I think that we should have our professionals working on structural questions like that, though. We can certainly evaluate them, but I think that we pay this gentleman less than he's worth, but a lot of money, and.
Uh-oh, Chris. He just put you on the list.
But we should, you know, we should certainly get his input on kinds of structural changes that he recommends.
Absolutely. I'm not talking about that we do it in a vacuum, Mark. I'm saying that the board has a small committee that works with the superintendent, maybe somebody else, and we look at how we should be structured over the next five to 10 years. We're doing a strategic plan as how we're going to address teaching kids, but we also need to look at a plan of how we're going to manage the system.
It is an idea to be discussed, it's not one that adjusts the current budget, Chris.
Understand, but I think what Darlissa was talking, and correct me if I'm wrong, and you will anyways.
No, she says she's going to be quiet now.
But we need to look forward, and it is an opportunity to look at how are we structured so that we are better and more efficient in how we manage everything.
So I think that there's some areas of agreement here, that over time, things will change and will have to change, and that we are in a situation where funding is less and less each year. I think we're also in agreement that today's June 6th, and so to make radical changes in June for, and I know that's not what you're saying, so I think that over time, to look at how we combine disciplines and how we maybe look at our graded system and come up with different ways of offering education to kids over time is something that we should look at, and that's appropriate.
Yeah, and if I can just make one more point, I mean, we keep saying it's got to be the kids first, it's got to be the kids first. You can't do that if you have teachers that are being, you know, treated unfairly or have the perception of being treated unfairly. To Ed's point earlier, this is the 11th year in a row, we've gotten less than 50% of what we've requested, and I firmly believe the only reason we have the outcomes that we do in our schools is because of the quality of teachers and because of the quality of our administration. They have gotten us to the point where we are now. So yes, if we're going to talk about kids first, that includes our teachers and that includes our administrators, and I am all in favor, I'm not afraid of change, I'm in favor of restructuring, I'm in favor of constantly looking to improve the way that we do things, but we can't, we can't go blindly into this sort of kids-first thing without including the consideration of our teachers and our administrators.
And our, and support staff. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. You still have some things, Kathy? Or have you covered it?
I covered it, thank you.
Okay, does other, do other people, yes, Dave?
I have one other thing to throw out, and this will probably not be well received. We cannot control the increases to all our contractual employees, the teachers, the secretaries, and so forth. The only group that we can control is the administrative staff, where we put money into the budget for salary increases. And I looked at some of the numbers, and Ed's going to have to give me the rest of them, because it's not really a huge amount of money. But I would suggest that we consider deferring their raises for six months. This would save some money, they would still get raises, but it would save us money that we could use in some other item, for supplies. Because one amount is only $55,000, and if you say that, you're talking about 27.5, you know, but that could go to something else. And it wouldn't be that we're, I don't want to punish them, but we have to look at ways of better manager money. This would still give them raises, but it would be a half a year later than the normal
This would still give them raises, but it would be a half a year later than normal, because most of the raises are going to come July 1st.
And it would be contractual obligations is the problem.
No, no, these are not people that have, that it defines when they're going to get the raises. I talked to Carol about this beforehand, that these are people that, like Chris, is going to get a raise, but it doesn't have to be July 1st, it can be December 1st.
His contract specifies what his minimum rate of pay is for the school year that starts July 1.
So you're talking about individual contracts?
For people, our non-bargaining unit administrators.
Our bargaining unit contracts have definite dates.
Right, right.
Right, so our individual contracts, that would have to be a consensus between the person and I guess the board.
I understand that, but we need to explore that. We need to look at that.
Their contracts are already settled, it would be reopening their contract.
So what I'm hearing is that the raises for all those people are already laid out?
There is one that is not current.
It's in the budget.
It's in the budget.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
In the budget doesn't mean that it's...
Right, contractual, it'd be...
There's only one person, and that is Ed, who does not have a contract that spells out what his pay will be next year. We will be voting on that in our June meeting. And, you know...
Take your sick day now.
Yeah. In the interest of time, because we have been at this for a few hours now, our superintendent has asked if we are willing to vote at this time on some changes with the understanding that we can reopen it in the event that we get a shift in the bus contract. And actually, what I would suggest at the moment is that we get a motion for items 1 through 28, then any motions for amendments and so forth. The concerns are, we need to make sure, first off, Friday, our building assignments go out for next year. We want people to know where they stand. We are our employees, the right to have some certainty. Also, we do have a number of parents who are very concerned. Hopefully, those that have been watching know that the School of Innovation is safe, but there are other parents who are concerned about different things. Let's give people some reasonable certainty. And then hopefully, we'll be in a position to come back in a week or so to make some improvements.
Would it make more sense to go, it may take time, but to go line by line? Because then we know what we need to revisit?
And we do have questions on some areas that Ed is looking into for monies, like number 17, number 19, number 13.
Number one.
Number one.
Well...
Number, well, my paper doesn't have a number.
What I would propose is that we have taken notes about, we have taken notes about what you've, some of the concerns you've raised, and we would, in alignment with many of the issues you've raised, we would look at that and communicate with you.
But I cannot vote for some, I'm not going to vote. Overall, okay, go along with all 28 items. I have to vote no.
Right.
Because I don't agree, we're waiting for information on these other items.
I tend to agree that much.
So I think we have to wait until we get the full information.
I would like to...
And we need, we need costs, we need information. We've asterisked, you know, several of them, and they add up to a lot of money. So I will have to vote no, no matter what you say, if you're just going to blink it, okay, well, 28 items.
Well, my concern is that, so we could have another meeting next week, and then there will still be questions. And at some point, you're going to have to vote on what was...
Yes, I'd rather.
Let me just finish my sentence. At some point, there's going to have to be a vote, and it's going to be on a projected budget. The budgets are not carved in stone. There are always changes, students come, students go, things change. So no matter what day we vote, there's going to be some level of contingency to it, and there's going to be some underpinning of projection to it. And that's how all budgets work.
Well, I understand that very well. But Ed promised us he'd get these numbers for us. I'll wait till next week and then make it.
I can give you item one right now, because I found it in my notes. So that includes a music position for $57,131.
For number one?
Yes.
What is it you're getting at?
Music.
There's four positions in there. One is, and they're spelled out on that exhibit one. So music is $57,131. Special ed, $58,617. English language arts, $94,369. And the classroom teacher, $108,933. Total, $3,319,000, $50.
Did that include medical benefits, too?
No, that was a...
No, it's a salary. So we made adjustments in the medical, in the benefits.
The medical benefits are...
Part of the $175.
Where's that, where's the medical benefits in number eight?
Number eight.
But that's based on new rates, it says, based on new rates.
Based on new rates for who we'd be covering.
But it takes into account all of the staff.
Well, the ones, the four that, like, do we know, I don't know, if they're a family plan, are they $16,000, $18,000?
Just bake that in, and bear in mind, at the time our budget was done, we projected a lower cost for medical than the city's insurance advisor had told us to use, because we thought they were on the high side, okay? So some of their reduction has already been factored in before we get to this sheet of paper. What I would ask...
Whatever number we have in for medical is going to change. We're going to have people coming in, coming out, changing plans, it's an estimate. So people are going to be paying more, so...
What I would ask people to do is to consider allowing us to proceed with a vote that at least firms up the staff reductions and the reassignments of staff with the understanding that we can revisit other items next week. But I want our staff members to know where they stand, and I want our parents to know where they stand as soon as possible. Hopefully, something will change on the buses, and then we can come back and throw this out and start over.
We keep wishing for that, though.
But, yeah, wishful thinking.
Who acts as our parliamentarian?
I believe it would be a member of the board that would be assigned to that role.
Well, the reason I ask is, if I remember my Robert Schultze order correctly, a person voting in the affirmative on the issue that passes has the right to bring a motion for reconsideration. So then those of us that would vote in favor of this could bring back a motion for reconsideration of the budget at a later point in time when we have additional information. This would allow us a mechanism to revisit it.
But I want specifically to try to have the staff matters...
Solidified.
Solidified to the point where people who need to make changes in their life know about it and have as much warning as possible.
So can we vote on item 1 and 2 then tonight? Can we just, let's just do item 1 and 2, because that needs to be done expeditions.
The items that deal with the staff, and then...
And there are a number of others.
Yeah.
You know, I'm just looking, right now...
I mean, workers comp and unemployment, yeah.
We could take 1 through 13 as a lump, because that includes those two staff items, the program enhancements, and then the other things which replaces, we've already got savings, computer equipment, transportation we're not required to do. So if you would like, I could make a motion to that effect. For 1 through 13? 1 through 13.
Well, then you would have to include 14 as well, no?
No, she wants to do 14 individually.
Yeah, exactly.
I know what you're going.
I don't like 14, but I...
Yeah, I think it's better to vote, I think it's better to vote on a bottom line with the proviso. And again, even if, even if that wasn't a part of it, we could say, let's revisit next week, and there'd be opportunity to do that. But, but there's, part of running a school district and part of overseeing a school district, as you are responsible for, the overseeing part, is that there needs to be some level of stability and certainty. And to have people all, and I'm not suggesting that you're all over the place, but don't forget what will happen after this meeting. People will half here, they'll sort of have understood something, and the level of rumors and uncertainty will grow exponentially. That's not good for anybody.
They could go back on Facebook and watch the whole thing.
But, I mean...
I moved to, I moved to adopt items 1 through 28 in our budget reduction.
Okay, motion has been made in second. To accept items 1 through 28. Are there any amendments?
I would like to amend that to, with the provision that we can come back and revisit any of these items from 1 through 28.
I, well, Judd, you don't have the... Basically, I think what you're saying is...
But I want it on record.
Should we have a tentative meeting scheduled for next Wednesday?
Yes.
I'm fine with that. Let's do a tentative meeting for next Wednesday.
Point of order, that's not, that's not germane to the motion.
Yeah, okay. I...
The motion.
I don't think we need an amendment for what you're looking for, I'm agreeable to the premise.
Was there a second?
Yes, we have a motion and a second. Okay, is there a second to the amendment that I don't...
Who seconded it?
Dave, it made a motion.
I made a motion.
Many seconds.
Many seconded it.
Okay. I really don't feel your amendment is necessary, I agree to the concept.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, sensing we are ready to vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we have two nay abstentions?
Six to two.
Okay. All righty, that is the last item on our agenda for this evening.
Parents that are here that are interested in having an informal short gathering down in the training room, down at the end of the hall, I'll be down there if you want to stop in and just have any kind of an informal conversation about tonight's meeting and other concerns you have. It's the room at the end of the hall on the right, I'll be right down there.